We're gonna kinda go through everything with you from what's going on at Marsh Street to the spatial analysis that you all approved with Boswick Design and then the cost estimate and project design study, the needs of police and fire and kind of where we're at now and next steps. Just before we begin, I wanna recognize and thank Mark Miller, who has been amazing through all this. He's been extremely patient and accommodating in working with us on this and just really appreciate all you've done, so thank you. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to A.J. Antolik to begin with kind of the context that got us here.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So in front of you, you have a couple of large reports, and in this report, what we're gonna go over tonight, but just to table of contents, it's the city summary report, the Boswick Spatial and Programming Analysis, the pre-design, cost estimate, Phase One Cost Estimate, aerial maps, floor plans, and about the programming and space analysis. So tonight, we're gonna discuss, as Renee said, the former Miller Brothers property and the complex and what our goal is for the property. Okay. So this picture is obviously very familiar to everybody. This is at 21st and State. This is Miller Brothers property. Just wanted to give everybody a context and a reference of what we're talking about, the building. I'm sure everyone's driven past it hundreds of times. The project is primarily a City of Erie Public Safety Complex that's going to space and house administration, equipment, operations that are critical to the safety of residents, visitors, employees, and business owners. There's an immediate need for the Erie Fire Department Administration, Fire Mechanics Division to move. We will discuss that shortly. This would be a centralized location, an emergency operations center, and eventually a consolidation of services. And as I stated in front of you, this is under Tab Two of your report. This next picture is basically foreshadowing, if you would say, of a movie where you would see what the end of the movie looks like versus how we get here. So this is all the work that we've essentially put into this complex, an aerial viewpoint of all the different quadrants of the building, of what we expect and what we would intend to utilize a space for. We were very pragmatic with our approach and comprehensive, and we look forward to going through this tonight with everybody. So the question that everyone's probably wondering is how do we get here and why we're here, sitting, talking, and discussing this today? This is also on Page Three in your packet. The Marsh Street Garage is located at 311 Marsh Street, adjacent to the Erie Zoo. And in October of 2021, City of Erie staff noticed the advanced deterioration of the facility. And in fact, what really started this entire process was a piece of roof ceiling fell off and broke a windshield in the truck. And that signified noticing all the cracking and the structural failings of the building that we needed to look into this. And our Bureau of Parks is in the basement, and the Fire Department's Administration Office and the Fire Mechanics are on the ground rubble. The next slide will show you the pictures of what we experienced at this building. And it's important to reference that the left side is the Fire Mechanics Division and the right side is directly squarely underneath these portions of the building. So as you can see, the above pictures, they highlighted deterioration on the floor and the concrete structure. The public works, we had to, we worked with the structural engineer to evaluate the surface of the ceiling and the roof essentially. And monitoring the cracking and fracturing of the floors, we've made a determination to restrict the area. And you can see this in the top-left picture and in the bottom of the picture, there's a restricted area. And this picture was obviously taken prior to the area being restricted because the fire engine is parked past the restricted area. But as you can see, underneath where the floor beams are, on the right-hand side is the deterioration and fracturing of the floor, which is causing deterioration and structural integrity issues. And we've been monitoring the cracks and fractures in the floor since 2022, and we continue to monitor it to this day. So what we did was that we worked with Ashley Porter, a structural engineer, and what we determined was to reestablish the structure integrity of the floor and the ceiling is roughly over $1 million. And that would be a full replacement and filling of the floor. And the restoration of this project, in our belief, is not feasible due to the age, the current condition, and the limitations of the structure. As I stated, currently, we're monitoring the floor and the cracks, and we have an inability to open this building safely again for full usage. So parts of the building will remain blocked off. And in addition to the feasibility of this building, the Fire Mechanics Division, they cannot tilt their cabs fully open, they cannot test their ladders completely with inside. And now, losing space to pull in obviously, again, hampers their ability to conduct work, which also makes it unsafe essentially for the employees down in the Bureau of Parks, which is below the basement. So realizing that we've had all of these issues, the city, we took a step back to do a cross-departmental analysis of what other spatial requirements, short-term, long-term need that we have. So what we did was that we assessed short-term, long-term needs comprehensively. And it's important to note that this is not a satellite precinct. This space is a public safety complex that's gonna be used for operations, administration, training, evidence storage, archiving, and the housing of millions of dollars' worth of equipment and emergency response vehicles. So we evaluated our needs beyond Marsh, and there's definite, obviously, a need for space. And this discussion encapsulated the fact that we need a regional training center, a emergency response center, a public safety building. So throughout the discussions, Miller Brothers site was known to be for sale potentially, and it continued to come up in the discussions. So throughout this process, we're very pragmatic. We met multiple times interdepartmentally. And tonight, with us is Deputy Chief Bill Marucci and Assistant Fire Chief Len Trot. And they're here to discuss fire and police's needs and how this Miller Brothers building would meet their solutions.
Good evening. Thank you for having this meeting and hearing us out today. The opportunity, once this opportunity came about and we were told that this purchase was out there, and we were asked what the police department can use and what needs we would have with the extra space. It's been no secret that we've outgrown our police department in certain aspects here in City Hall for several years, and we were looking for additional space for special operations. By no means that's moving our central operations to this space. We're staying here in City Hall, but this is just for additional needs that we have. And I had five categories that I wanna go over really quickly with you, just to explain what we would use this extra space for. First of all would be for Emergency Operations Center, Special Operations, and this would be for our SWAT team, our bomb squad, and our Special Operations units. Our SWAT team and our bomb squad are Tier One teams, and we're really lucky to have them in this area. They cover more than 13 counties and average, our SWAT team averages 100 calls for service a year, our bomb squad over 50 calls for service a year. The space, of course, it's a critical need for our Special Operations personnel. We don't have a space currently that if we get a call out that we can gather in one area, all of us together, and have a pre-post-op planning or any type of a briefing, we're usually meeting in a parking lot or at a satellite location that's not ours. The Emergency Operations Center would also be used to gather coordinate with Erie Police Department and the Erie Fire Department working together and other state, local, and federal agencies for any type of briefing or critical incident that happens inside the city, any type of rescue, or any other operation within the city or around the city. So we really are in a need of a Special Operations Center. And also, looking forward, we've been talking about a real-time crime center, which a lot of the larger cities have now adopted and are extremely successful. So we have started looking into grants for an infrastructure for a real-time crime center, and this would be a perfect opportunity to where we can place a real-time crime center in the future and give us a space for that.
Real-time crime centers?
So that is, it's basically, so we are getting that technology from ShotSpotter and all the cameras that we have access to throughout the city. So what a real-time crime center would be, it would be manned by police officers or intelligence personnel, data intelligence personnel, and we would have access to the cameras, the ShotSpotter intel, our plate readers that are out there. And once a crime gets called in, say a shooting gets called in, they would immediately then get on to the network, go to that area that we have cameras, and start monitoring those cameras, pick that data up from ShotSpotter to where exactly it happened, guide those officers in, and by looking at those cameras in real time, be able to guide the officers in to where they're going and what they're seeing in real time. Also, using the license plate reading technology, we would be able to monitor any type of license plates that were read in that area, and it would just further our investigation a lot quicker. So it's basically just eyes in the sky at real time. Okay, for a training facility, we currently don't have a training facility here. We have a small indoor range that was put in when the City Hall was built, and it will accompany four shooters. It's about 12 yards long, and it's used extensively by five additional agencies, including the Erie Police Department. With that, it's outdated, and we do put a lot of money in it to keep it going. So at this facility, we would be able to put in a larger shooting range, which would be 25 yards long, which is the minimum requirement that we need for qualification, and would house 10 shooters within it. This would also be used by state, local, and federal agencies, including Erie Insurance, Hammett Hospital, and our Mercy Earths College, Gannon College, County Probation, and State Parole.
Would we get compensated for that?
We, right now, when we get our range cleared out, they do compensate us. It's kind of, they do a lot for us, and we do some things for them. So it's, we do a lot of favors for each other, yes. But we would work out something if we did have something that was a little larger like that, and it was more of a constant flow of getting these agencies in there, we would work out some type of compensation package, of course. With that indoor range, we have a small bunker that's downstairs, and it's a bunker has to be to certain specifications of like two feet of concrete, and that houses all of our ammunition ordinance for our SWAT team and bomb squad, even though we do have a separate magazine for bomb squad, but this houses the majority of the police department's ammunition. We would have a larger one, of course, at this building that would be more secure and built to better specifications. The classroom, currently at the police department, we have a small classroom that houses 10 officers. At best, we have to, just to train our police department, we have to have 17 separate day sessions to train, to get our whole police department through one class, because we can only fit 10 officers in that class. We also really don't have a large classroom for the fire department, so this would be something that we would share with the fire department, of course, have a large classroom, be able to host up to 25 officers, maybe even larger, and get these classes through a lot quicker and not have to break it up into those sessions. The practical training space that's up there is just talking about a large room that we could put mats down, that we can do any type of defensive tactic training, training with tasers, de-escalation training, and it was just a large room that we don't have, that we would be able to use for everything and anything. And then with that, we would call that a regional public safety training facility with a large classroom and a large practical training room to where we can now host other agencies and bring in other instructors rather than sending us out of town to have instruction. We could be the host agency and have those instructors come in and then more or less be a regional asset for a regional training facility at that location within the city.
Is there a practical, like, is there a reason why you don't just use our council chambers when you need to train a whole bunch of people at the same time?
Yeah.
Is there like, you know, you can't disclose certain information or something?
Well, again, it does have to be, it would have to be something that's really not able, the public able to really see, because a lot of things that we do, some of our training, are secret. I mean, not, you know, some of our tactics and trainings that we're gonna go over. But again, just to have, you know, mats set up, certain things inside that room, you know, that we'd be able to sit there. If we were to come in here, it would take probably several hours just to set this up, you know, to use it as a, it's not, it's not practical, it's something we can do though.
Bring in all the officers at the same time, and that'd be a problem for the street?
Well, that's why we would limit it, so when we, when we, if we were able to do like 25 would be practical, any more than that, it wouldn't be. Yeah, we'd be taking a lot off the street, but when we're doing just 10 officers coming into a classroom, we're having to break it up into 17 trainings, and it really messes up on our schedule. And then again, bringing in host agencies, because a lot of times, we offer a lot of good trainings, we have great instructors, and when, say, we put on a training, we have a ton of other agencies that ask, hey, could we be part of your training? Could we send officers? And they wanna compensate us, and we have to turn them down because we don't have the space to do it, we just have to train our own, and that's the only space we have. For number three, our emergency response vehicle and equipment space, it's basically a space to house these vehicles. And really, our SWAT team started in 1993, and we started out with one old streets van that was yellow, and we got the rattle cans and spray painted it blue, and that was our SWAT vehicle. That was our first one. Since then, things have grown and the need for SWAT, bombs, and special response has grown. So with that, we currently have, we house our vehicles downstairs at City Hall, and it's very cramped. We house them outside at the city municipal garage, and we house them inside at the city municipal garage. And space is very limited, we're constantly moving vehicles around to get vehicles out. And just to give you an idea of what we have right now, we have two mobile command centers, and they're basically RVs. They're parked outside at the city municipal garage, and they're not supposed to be parked outside, because the weather does get to RVs, they're not really supposed to be out there in the winter. We're having problems with the deterioration of the roof and the roof leaking, so we do have to get those inside, so that would be one big thing. For our bomb squad, they have a regional response vehicle that houses all their equipment with their robot. They have another, they have a Tahoe that tow's a trailer with some equipment in it, and then they have an incinerator trailer that they have to tow, and that's what they use to incinerate. If we get like a lot of fireworks, or if they find any type of chemical explosive device or firework-type device that doesn't have a percussion to blow up, they incinerate it in this. And then they have a separate trailer, it's a bomb disposal trailer, that's a single-stack exhaust trailer, and this is the type that you'd put an actual explosive device inside of it, it would detonate, and then the pressure would release out of that trailer. So that's another trailer that they have that has to be indoors. And speaking of that, you know, we get a lot of talk, does our bomb squad get called out, you know, are they used? And last night, we just got called out for several pipe bombs that were found inside a house, and I'll pass it out to you, and that's just to give you an idea that that was found yesterday, those are pipe bombs that were found inside of a house. One of those pipe bombs, if it went off, would kill us all right now. And them finding those pipe bombs, disposing of them, they will use that trailer to detonate those pipe bombs. And that was just something that was found in the City of Erie yesterday. We also have a, with the SWAT team, we now have a armored vehicle. We have two transportation vans, one being a smaller transportation van that houses equipment and personnel, and then just a 15-passenger personnel transport van. We have a equipment transport vehicle, and we are on a grant for another equipment transport vehicle, because everything SWAT does has to go mobile, so all of our equipment has to go in our vehicles, so our vehicles are really our bread and butter, and we have to have them up and running, available, and together with the equipment inside. We have a prisoner transport van that's from the department that's used on special operations. We would like to house there. Right now, a lot of the equipment's unprotected, sits outside, it's not secured, and it's not together, so it's kind of scattered about, and we really need somewhere to put them all together. For number four, this is a, this is a big thing that we really need. For our evidence storage, we need a secure, climate-controlled space for evidence storage. Right now, due to all the cases, we have to keep anything that happens, say, if you have a homicide or felony arrests, you have to keep that evidence for 99 years, so we have to store that evidence for up to 99 years, and then that's our long-term. We have already filled up our long-term storage with a, in a storage area downstairs in the basement. That's not climate-controlled, it's very damp, and it leaks successfully. We're always fixing it, we have tarps over our evidence, and we're doing everything we can to keep that evidence safe for this long-term storage, so that is filled up. For our short-term storage, we have another area that's damp. We had sewage leak onto that from our cell ranges, so we were covering that with tarps. That's filled up, and now we're using two of our cell ranges for evidence storage, which is eight cells. We have five cell ranges, four cells each, and two of them are filled up with evidence, because we have run out of space and have nowhere to store our evidence. So that only leaves us with three cell ranges, and on a busy night, or if you get a lot of people, you have to separate these individuals, you can't put everybody in one cell range, you have to separate them. And we're, of course, running out of short-term cell range storage for individuals and for evidence. So we really do need that storage. The vehicle evidence that we store, if we get a vehicle that was involved in a shooting, we tow that vehicle to the municipal garage, and it's stored inside, and then our forensic processors will go through that vehicle and process that vehicle. Currently, we'd only process one vehicle at a time, and we can store another vehicle. Any other vehicle that we have has to be stored outside, or we have to find a space somewhere in City Hall basement. At any one time, we could have at least six vehicles that we need stored, and that includes stolen vehicles. And right now, for stolen vehicles, we're just towing them to the yard of the person that's contracted through the city, and they're stored outside and processed outside, which is not ideal at all. This new space will allow for at least eight vehicles to be stored securely and for our processors to be able to process all eight at one time. Okay, moving on. This is the last one. For our Police Athletic League, PEL program, we currently do not have a dedicated PEL space within the department or a storage area for our PEL's equipment. We don't have, we meet upstairs in Room 500 for board meetings, but for when we have parents come in or children come in, just to have a meeting or a mentoring program, we do not have a space for them to give educational classes or anything like that. We do go to schools, we do go to other agencies, but it would be nice to have our own classroom for those children. The program, of course, you've heard many times, it's grown over the last six years from 50-something students to well over 1,000 right now, and we really have no dedicated space, and this would give us an opportunity to have a dedicated space for those children. We also have two PEL buses that were, of course, donated to us by EMTA. We house them inside and outside, we're constantly moving them around, and really have nowhere to store them either. This would also give us that ability to store these buses inside and keep them in good condition. And I'll take any questions now or at the end, but that's all I have from the police department. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. These pictures are at our point, because they just, the opportunity presented itself this afternoon, that we had trucks at the garage this afternoon. So to highlight what A.J. was saying about what we can't do at Marsh Street safely, the first picture is a picture of the safety prop, where the cab is up. The top of the prop is a green arrow, and the yellow arrow is where it needs to get to. So right now, we have made safety props so that our guys can get underneath the cabs safely, but that's not ideal when the cabs aren't really high enough to do what they need to do sometimes, and if they have to get the cab up higher, we have to go outside. The second picture is where we took some cross-supports out of the beams, the ceiling trusses, so that we could get the cabs up that far. And picture number three shows you just how tight it is when we have to tilt the cab. The next picture is of our tower going into the garage, which allows inches when it goes through the door. And the same in the next picture. If you have to go up the ladder to do something on the basket, or to do something on the ladder itself, you know, you're basically crawling up the ladder, because there's no room. Safety is our biggest concern with Marsh Street. With the floor being in as bad a shape as it is, our pumper's are on the average of 34 feet long and they weigh 40,000 pounds, and the tower is 51 feet long and it weighs 80,000 pounds. So it's definitely a concern with the floor and the supports deteriorating. The ceiling height is a problem when we have to do something on top of the rig or tilt the cabs. And we're, our guys are still working on the ground, on the vehicles, everything's done on the ground. You know, 30 years ago, people started putting in lifts and jacking them up, so you can get underneath them, you can do better preventive maintenance, you can see things better, and they're easier to work on and safer for our guys as far as health and, you know, injuries and stuff like that, trying to do stuff on the ground. Right now, we can work on one piece of apparatus, because if we put a piece of apparatus where we've designated spots, we can tilt the cab, and it's out of service, we can't move it, and another truck breaks. If we need to be able to tilt the cab or do something, lift it up high enough, we have to do it outside, because there's no other place that we can do that inside Marsh Street. Efficiency, a lift at the new, at Miller Brothers would allow us to have a lift, to get them up off the ground. Ladder repairs, anything that has to be done on the tower ladder has to be done outside, because we can't extend it or even begin to lift it out of the bed inside. So that's a huge thing for maintenance and repair on the ladders. Right now, we have equipment scattered across the city wherever we can stuff it, the corner of the firehouse. We'd be able to have everything in one location. It's a centralized location for our training. Right now, we do training at South Central or Central or Engine 10, or wherever we can find a place that works for the training. We have a central, we can bring everybody into a central location without having to leave some part of the city unprotected for a little while.
Less, it was a couple days ago, but you and I were talking about a training issue that came up because of going out to a place in the region, in the county. And you talked about how that place was the only one we can really go to.
That, that's Perry Highway's Training Center.
Yeah, Wednesday, because the Perry guy was here, so you were talking about our relationship there. Is that, would this provide us kind of facilities where we would no longer have to do that?
No, they have a bird building where they can, you know, like fighters and guys can go in and experience the heat, learn how to do searches in the pitch black and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So that's a little different.
Yep.
I don't, that is...
We'll leave that included in rural communities when you're doing fire stuff.
Our CPAC tests, our candidate physical agility tests that we do every two years when we create a candidate list for hiring. Right now, we search, every two years, we search for a vacant building and rent it to set up the equipment, because we have to be training for eight weeks and then the test. So Miller Brothers would be, we could set it up, leave it set up, or even if we had to take it down and set it back up, we'd have a spot, we don't have to search for one, we wouldn't have to pay rent. It'd be nice to be able to leave it set up, so our guys can go through it every once in a while. You know, and we have equipment that sits outside also, it'd be nice to get it inside. The Emergency Operations Center, you know, the city's required to have an Emergency Operations Center in case of a disaster. Right now, Marsh Street serves as that barely, because there are requirements that we just kind of skirt the edge on, so it'd be nice to have an Emergency Operations Center that is functioning and what it should be. You don't wanna find out what you don't have or what you can't do when the disaster's already happened.
Question. Since we don't have a public safety director, so in the event of an emergency or an active disaster, who takes the lead, the police or the fire?
Depends on the disaster. You know, is it a law enforcement, is it a fire, is it an EMS, you know? So it depends on what the... So it depends on what the disaster or the event is, is who's going to be in charge. But we, we live, we go by incident command, which has unified command. So you have one person, you only, you have one person in charge so things don't get confused. But he has somebody, he'll have a law enforcement, he'll have an EMS, he'll have somebody from administration, finance, planning, to, so depending on the, the size of this event is how big your command structure gets. So that's, that's how, what the emergency operations center does. And if it's a, say, you know, three tornadoes hit and it affected the city of Erie or Mill Creek and half the county, then that's where everybody would be staged so that we can coordinate that.
So I guess that's kind of my next point where it seemed like the, getting RVs and some of the other actual tangible equipment that we need for, for an incident would be a bigger thrust than a place to put it, like you're saying, like you need a classroom for this, but if you have an incident, the incident command is going to be on site. Usually, usually on site.
Well, yeah, it depends on how many events it is and what it is, is whether you want your commanders on site or you want away from there so that they're not.
Well, obviously, sometimes there's certain disasters we can't get, but, but, but so, so close, but then, then, you know, a specific place may still not be the right. So I'm, I'm just throwing that out there just to, in, into the atmosphere for, you know, for, you know, so I wanted to know who's in charge anyways. So I'm, I'm aware of incident command because I respond to emergencies at, at my place of work and, and so.
Okay. And right now, we're, the last thing would be, we're very lucky to have an ATF Accelerator Dog and.
That's what I'm most happy about, the new dog.
It's, it's a minor thing, you know, but it'd be nice to have a training room for him. Right now, you know, we, the handler trains him in a lot of different areas, but you know, if it's raining out or whatever, they train in the Marsh Street garage and it's a, it's a garage full of everything that he's trained this year. So, you know, if he had a, you know, a ten-by-twenty room in the corner that he could keep clean and free of all that stuff, that would be a bonus, you know? It's an asset and we'd like to keep it in good working order. But Miller Brothers would be a great fit for what we need and, and we need it sooner than later. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bill, thank you, Lynn. So after, basically then, it was our job to figure out short-term, medium-term, long-term. So as you can see, we broke down the needs and a lot of them that you've just heard. Short-term needs, fire administration, fire mechanicals division, emergency operations center, emergency response vehicles, operations overflow, evidence, storage, and many of these needs were just presented. And the medium, the medium-term needs included public workspace, so Erie Police SWAT, Vice Bomb Squad. There we go. PEL space, City of Erie Office Development, a logistics hub loading dock, and it's just an interesting point on this is that Miller Brothers has a loading dock, city currently doesn't have a loading dock that centralizes shipping logistics, which would be extreme benefit for shipping, purchasing goods, inventorying and inventory storage. And then finally, our long-term needs, as we've said, are the long-term regional public safety training facility, classroom, and then eventually total building investment. So then the question came out was, well, how do we, how do we put this all, where do we start? None of us are architects, none of us are space analysis, so what we did is we, we started a conversation, we started a conversation with Boswick Design in, in June of twenty twenty-two and City of Erie staff, we met with their staff to discuss the needs for programming and space analysis, which was recommended by them for similar projects that they've done and had success with. So on July sixth in twenty twenty-two, City Council authorized the administration's study of a twenty, for twenty-five thousand a hundred dollars for a programming and space analysis with Boswick for the Miller Brothers property, which sits at twenty-one eleven State Street, three point seven six acres. We've been through the building probably fifty times, I would say, give or take a few. Mark's out there listening, so he's been willing to open his doors for us. And our objective was to provide a high-level conceptual review of the buildings and for possible reuse and occupancy by the City of Erie Police, Fire and Public Works Department. So with that, we had, this next slide shows the two studies that we had conducted and it's important to note that study number one, the spatial analysis, we're with Lori Fitzgerald, she's on Zoom, she's a Pittsburgh office, she's a practice leader, community projects director for Boswick Design. This is in tab two. And David Brennan, who all of you know, is with us today, and he's the senior director at the Erie Office for Boswick Design, and he'll explain the cost estimate and project design and I'll jump in a little bit, not too much, to discuss that, and that's on tabs three and four. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori, and Lori, can you please discuss the programming and space analysis?
Sure. Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Should be good, right? Okay, so, yeah, so I'm Lori Fitzgerald, I'm the director of the Pittsburgh Office for Boswick Design Partnership, I'm Dave's counterpart in Pittsburgh, worked with him on this, on this task, and I think as AJ said, it should be tab two in the printed version that you have. So what we did was we, we met with all of the representatives of the various departments to understand the physical needs that they have. We made site visits to the existing locations where, where those resources are housed or their, their services are housed. We threw photographs, drawings, observations, we obsessed what those physical needs were. And we ultimately were trying to determine if this Miller Brothers property could accommodate those needs. So, you know, if you're packing a suitcase, does everything fit in the suitcase, right? And, and we did that both in floor plan as well as volume. So for example, the fire trucks, a taller spaces, so we had to make sure that they could meet the needs of the departments physically in, in all, in all ways. We provided, in the reports that you have in the printed versions, we provided spreadsheets that documented what all of those needs were, captured the needs of the vehicles that were maybe, you know, unusually large or needed clearances, captured the needs of any special accommodations, for example, the gun range, you know, has certain criteria, tried to just document all of that in a list format. And then we took all of that and applied that to drawings of the building to see how that aligned and made recommendations about where in the Miller Brothers building the various department needs could be met. And so those are a series of bubble diagrams that you have. So the, the report consists of an executive summary, consists of the spreadsheets that are the programming, spreadsheets that document that. It consists of the, the drawings that we call the bubble diagrams, so it didn't exactly like plan the rooms down to, down to walls and doors and windows, but it sort of said these are the zones where the, the different needs could be met and where they're best suited to the existing space. And then we also captured existing photographs to just document what the appearance and condition of the building is, both on the interior and exterior. And beyond that too, we also noted where the building would require additional modification to meet those needs. So while something might fit, that does not necessarily mean that you can just kind of move in, in that as-is condition, that there were observations we made during our site visits that would require additional investigation or attention or renovation or repair to make it suitable for the intended use. So the, the report concluded that the building has adequate space, that, that's not a problem, it has the right kinds of spaces, that the, it's actually really well-suited to, to many of the needs and that, you know, to get further into an understanding of the kinds of work that would need, needed to make it ready for use, that required additional study. So that's the, that's the second study that we performed, and I think Dave is going to present that.
And I was going to say just.
Are there any questions about that first study?
Yeah, I was just going to say that before we did the study, we toured all the facilities, we had a lot of discussions and talks, so there was a lot of looking at everything, look and see what vehicles are there, listening to the issues that, that we had as far as storage, location, you know, adjacencies, all those items, before we even dove into this. So there was a lot of discussion before we even looked at, at Miller Brothers to really, you know, see what, see what was there and see what was needed. So that was kind of prior to that, just wanted to add that.
Right, we, we did our due diligence, we worked extremely hard, you know, lots of, lots of meetings, phone calls, emails. So we got the report, the spatial analysis from Boswick, and then the next step was, well, how much does this all cost?
Just, just one step back, while you're talking about the due diligence, were any other sites considered or where, like?
Glad you brought that up because that's one of our points at the end, of one of the benefits of Miller Brothers, and not to jump too much around, but to answer your question, there's no other site in the Erie real estate market that offers one hundred and twenty thousand square foot space and building that's already built, that all needs to be renovated or remodeled instead of bringing up, built brand-new. So the, the di, the dynamics of that are, are unique in the sense that this is the only opportunity of this type of, of building on the market in Erie real estate currently.
So the first look was, I'm sorry, how many square feet?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Roughly rounding up.
So there was a number that was sort of determined in that, we saw what was available on the market and this was the only thing even close.
We looked, we looked at, we, we looked at various other properties, Canfield Radiator, we had called, the, the price, which we found segmented, right? So segmented pricing of buildings that would match this, this square footage, when you add it up combined, the total value of those are way, much more than what the value of B two would, would be to buy a one continuous campus of, of offers.
Thanks.
And it's part of that also, we have a spreadsheet that showed, you know, all the functions, adjacencies, square footages, equipment, all that. It was one chart that we, we were able to get the information together by having the interviews and talk, talking to, you know, the, the fire chief and, and the, and the police chief. So it was really the, the basis, that, that chart, that programming was really the basis for then looking at, looking at this building, determining the square footage needed, and then, then as Lori mentioned, the, the final determination that there's enough space here plus extra space. But the, and again, you'll see in the di, if you haven't seen the diagram, that, that shows that.
And that's all in here, all for everybody's to, to review and, and to look through, it's a lot of information, but it shows the diligence that, that we did to get here, so.
Well, if you're getting there anyways, sorry to speed it up and, and jump ahead in the presentation.
Yeah, so basically then, our question was, how do we get there? How do we, how do, how do we determine how much it costs? So on January eighteenth, after we met, reviewed, we, we then again contracted with Boswick Design for a conceptual design and, and cost estimate for a study of thirty thousand three hundred dollars, which Council approved the administration's request in January eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, specifically aiming at the short, medium and long terms while looking at market conditions, change of use, building unknowns, code compliance, future expenses, and really getting into the details on facade, roofs, general construction, fire protection, plumbing, HVAC, future expenses, electric and site work. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Dave to go over that part.
For this, this study, this was the pre-designed services and cost estimate, and I just wanted to let you know, for our team, we, we brought together professionals, experts in different areas, like Trophy Point is a cost estimator firm, that's all they do is cost estimation because, you know, we can guess at things on historical numbers, you know, books, that type of thing, but they're professional, they, they look at the current, current trends, they look at the current costs, so they're up on it. So Trophy Point was our cost estimator, Karpinski was our ME, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing consultant, again, a very good engineering consultant, and then Porter Consulting, again, you know, you know, Ashley Porter worked on the prior study for the garage, he's a structural engineer, and also Civil, so he gave us input on, on the structural, Civil and, and also exterior envelope items. So we looked at Civil, architectural, electrical plumbing and structural. You know, we did a review of all of these, and again, the idea was to try to get as much information together to inform a cost estimate. Again, you know, there's, if we actually did a design, there of course we need to spend much more time, because, you know, the, the building wasn't purchased, we wanted to kind of cut to the chase and do the minimal amount of work to be able to get a good cost estimate, get the information so that the, our cost estimator could take those numbers and get a, a good number as, as close as possible to what the actual cost would be.
Excuse me, do I understand you're doing all this without a contract with Mr. Miller? Can I be your broker?
We're going to get to that.
Oh, okay.
So we did a high-level review of the following issues. First was a change of use. This building is going from a storage and mercantile function to a public works function, so you're looking at the vehicle storage, you're looking at offices, so it's a change of use. And to do a change of use, you have to then update the building for energy code, so you're looking at insulation, you're looking at electrical service, you're looking at all these things that, that we needed to look at to determine what a cost would be. Also, you know, restrooms also, plumbing fixtures, all those things are required to look at. When you do a change of use, everything comes in, comes into play.
Question, sir. Will we interview these owners?
No, no. For the exterior envelope, you know, the building's mostly brick, there's metal siding, et cetera, you know, some of it needs repaired, replaced, different things with the May Street facade need, you know, need re-pointed, that type of thing, windows need replaced, so we looked at all of that and came up with numbers for that. And then also the building functional changes. You know, what Lori spoke of is the, the programming and space analysis. All those, all the information we gathered in that, in that first phase were brought into this space to see what rooms we need to install, you know, what, what facilities, what the, the gun range, the storage, you know, all, all these specialty functions have to go in the space, and then so there's construction costs along with the new construction, not just envelope, but also interior, interior functions, mechanical systems, electrical, generator, you know, all that stuff is, is in the cost estimate. So this cost estimate, when you see it, it is the full project scope as determined through this review. And again, some of these areas aren't going to be used in this phase one, and we'll talk about the phase one a little bit, but the, we made a, a lot of assumptions on the work scope because of course we haven't designed the building. So we, we assumed square footages of rooms from our programming study, we assumed plumbing fixtures from our code review, you know, what, what those costs would be, we assumed finishes, roofing, all, all those items to go into this, into this cost. And also, the, the time in the construction, we have a, when you see the cost estimate, there's an escalation factor, you know, as everyone knows, construction costs go up three to six percent per year. Again, it's, it's, you know, it's pretty challenging to keep up with those numbers, but you know, with COVID, again, not saying COVID's ending, but I think the prices are coming back more in shape now. You know, we, we've been seeing a lot, you know, a lot of contractors are telling us that it is getting to be a better environment for, for cost, so we're, we're hopeful that's, that's going to benefit everybody. So just a few notes regarding the cost estimate. All this work that's in this cost estimate does not need to be completed at one time. We, we have a cost for every square inch of this to be either, you know, with electrical work, finishes, with restoration, you know, every square foot is, is accommodated in this cost. So you would not have to do everything upfront, so when you see the cost, just kind of take that in mind. And, and it's going to be phased, there's a phase one that's delineated in the, in the packet, and we have a separate number for that, so there's an overall number for the whole project, includes everything, but then there's a separate number just for phase one.
Phase one's on tab four, if you follow along.
But yeah, let, let's go through the cost estimate now, I'm kind of, I have a few comments about it, but I wanted to run through it if we could. But this, this cost estimate is the overall cost estimate and the different columns, the first column on the, on the far left, if you, can you go back up one? Yeah. The first column on the left are all the items, all the, the rooms, the different, different areas of the building. And then the second column is the quantities, where you're seeing square footage or different allowances. Then the third column is the actual cost per square foot, or else, you know, when they have an allowance, it's a total cost for that allowance. But typically, it's a cost per square foot. And then on the far right is the unit cost times the cost per square foot for a total, and then of course they, as you run down, you know, you have, you have subtotals along the way. The first section is facade repairs. We looked at each facade, you know, French Street, Twenty-third Street, State Street, Twenty-first, and then also window replacement is a separate number. And also there is an area in one portion of the building where we, we are putting in new openings for, for vehicles, so that, that's accommodated also. So we. So we, uh, through, uh, Porter Consulting's work and our work, we teamed together to determine what would be the allowance cost to do those repairs. So that is a cost to take the exterior facade and, and bring it back into, uh, uh, into, um, you know, a, a good repair, so it's all, all the brick is repointed, the stone's repaired, all, all the type of stuff. You know, windows are replaced, because right now, there's windows over there, there's a, there's, it's quarter-inch glass, it's not insulated, so we wanna meet energy codes, we wanna have insulated glass, we wanna-
Do you want bars on the windows?
No, not, we, we, there is secure facilities, but there are in certain locations of the building that'll be protected. And there's actually a number, uh, in there that, um, for, they call it building hardening. There's certain locations of the building that have to be, uh, specially fire-protected, or have emergency generators or those type of things, because if the power goes down, they can't go down, they have to, have to function. So there's an extra factor that we have, uh, at the end of one section, which I'll point out to, that has cost for that. And then the next section was the, uh, roof replacement, and again, there's a big number there. And that is because of the, um, energy code. The roof, the roofs are in generally good condition, but they currently don't meet the energy code. You need R30 on the roof, it's, it's a, in, our value of resistance for, uh, for heat. So the energy code requires us to have R30, so, uh, because of that, uh, we have to replace the roof. So you see, that's a large number. Again, that's a tough number to put forward, but it's something that, you know, we can't, we have to keep up with the energy code and, and be, be, uh, you know, do the right thing for the code. And then general construction, we have each area, uh, we could show the floor plan a little bit, but each area has a, a, a square footage to it, we have a cost per square foot, and the cost per square foot were determined by looking at what work is required in each area. So really, each one of these lines had homework to it, we have, uh, the calculations for how we got to those numbers, like eighty, eighty dollars a square for the gun range, well, there's, there's a, there's the reasoning and backup for that. So all the rooms are listed, you know, gun range, uh, fire vehicle storage, uh, elevator. We do have an elevator, to make the building fully accessible, we need to have an elevator, uh, in this building. And also, we have a, an added stair tower for, for exiting. Uh, there, you have to have two exits from each space, and depending on, um, you know, where you're at, a square footage.
Who generates?
Um, I don't, it's in, it's in the report, I'm not sure how many exact generators, there might be multiple generators. I have to look at the, it's in, it's in the detail. Yeah, absolutely. And then we do have some, um, in the last section there on, on, on page three, there's a, we have numbers for fire protection, the building sprinkled, um, there's for plumbing, you know, that includes, uh, plumbing fixtures, et cetera. Uh, restrooms, then HVAC, we have a number for HVAC, and then a number for the electrical. So we have a cost per square foot, so every square inch, every square foot of this building has a cost for, uh, for, for, for that general construction of those, um, of those trades. And then, we do have a number for site work. The parking area needs to be secure, so there's secure gates. Uh, we need to install, um, uh, additional, uh, parking areas within, within the site. Uh, there's also some, uh, areas of the site which are, need to be paved and added, uh, more drainage to it, so there's number, numbers for that. And then at the end, we have a, um, uh, escalation, uh, factor, as I mentioned earlier, of six percent. So again, that's a big number, but depending on how quickly you start construction, you know, that number could go down. But if you, the longer you wait, that, that, the, the prices keep on rising higher and higher, that's why we put, we put that in there. And then we identified a phase one, I don't know if you wanna jump to that map, you know, the, the map that shows the phase one?
Yep. Go back one. Map one more. Keep going.
Yeah, sorry to make you go back there.
So it's already built?
Yes, that, that's the total.
This is phase one.
Yeah, in red, um, so we, we provided a cost for the entire, um, facility. But then we looked at, what would a phase one be, what, what, what are the most important needs, uh, for, for the city? So it was identified through working, working with AJ and everyone else, what, what that, uh, what that phase one would be, and you could see it delineated, uh, with the red line. So then we did a, a second cost estimate, um, taking, um, uh, basically taking some of the numbers that we had for the original estimate and breaking it down, and then you're seeing those numbers, if you wanna jump ahead to that sheet, sorry to make you do the gymnastics.
Keep going. Two more slides.
Yeah, so we broke it down, um, showing, um, the costs if we just did a phase one. And again, same categories, but of course, not, not everything that's included in, uh, in the first project estimate is included here, just the areas within the red area, um, and then that, that number came to, to six, sixteen.
I was gonna be just moving, you know, when you do it, why don't you write, when you go all in? Just a question.
Yeah, well, that, well, that's, I think that we were asked to provide a number for the whole picture. What would, what would be right now to just put, put a number to everything and, and renovate everything? And then we were asked to do a number to just focus on this area.
Right, and I, I think it's important to note that the phase one is what we've determined as our immediacy needs, right? So that's the short term, that fire mechanics division, the, the emergency vehicle parking, the loading dock, the retail office space of training, that's where we're talking about with our immediate phase. So to answer the question preemptively, if, if we could phase, we prepared a phase one. But the entire phase is in, is in the thirty million dollar number, and then the phase one is a seven, is, is roughly under, a little under seventeen million.
And, and just a few notes, um, uh, as we determined in the programming study, there's more space here than you need. There's a phase one, then there's the entire building, and there's extra, you know, there's spaces, uh, all the spaces are being used, but there is extra space in this building as, as we, as we noted. So these areas of building could be mothballed, we could just not do anything, we could just close those areas off and not do them until a function would come up, or, you know, who knows what, what needs would come up in, in the future? I don't know, maybe, maybe a space is rented out, I, I don't know if the city would ever do that, but, um, there's, there'd be additional space that could just not be touched, and not, you don't need to put that investment forward now. But, um, another thing, uh, and I, I know you mentioned it to AJ also, but, um, I think the, the, an advantage of this building, you know, again, we're gonna talk about benefits in a little bit, but, but to be able to, um, use an existing building and, and do this reuse, this adaptive reuse of this existing building makes a lot of sense, um, that, just tearing down and building new. So I, I just wanted to, um, put in there, it's really, uh, important to, um, you know, upgrade facilities, and I, I, it'd be great to be sustainable and, 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 and really be energy-conscious by not demoing and building new, by, by renovating buildings, it would, it saves costs, as we had, had mentioned, as opposed to building new. And also, as an existing asset that's in the city, that's centrally located, you know, again, I think AJ's gonna talk about some of those items, um, but I just wanted to add that in, that, uh, you know, this, this building, uh, uh, can be renovated, again, there's a cost to everything, it doesn't all have to be done at one time, it's, it's an investment, but you could make an investment just of the, the portions of the building that you need to occupy right now, which would be a phase one.
Thanks, Dave, that's, that was-
Sorry for talking to you.
No, that's okay, that's great, I appreciate it. The, the way you explain it, uh, yeah, absolutely, there's a, there's, there's a lot of benefits, the adaptive reuse, the sustainability, the building is a historical building, there's a lot of remarkable architecture, history that's Erie-centric in that building that is remarkable to see, and there are some of the pictures in, in the report that you were given that will highlight that. One picture that you see on the screen now that came across our research, this was a old rendering that was done prior to Mark being in the building, of what an envelope uplift would look like at Miller Brother's site. And we thought that that would be included into this report, just so you could see what, a vision of, of, of what this could look like, not only for State Street, the neighborhood, um, just an, an image of, of what this would look like. So wanted to talk about, um, some of the opportunities to discuss. And, and the opportunities to highlight are the consolidation of services, the proximate locations of city buildings, including Public Works Complex, it's a centrally-located emergency response center, it's a, a regional training facility, it's a multi-regional asset which will open city of, uh, to additional funding at the federal and state level, and as David said much more eloquently than I could, the adaptive reuse and historic preservation of the building. The centralized location, I think it's important to, to really focus on that for a second, is it's, it's, this is located in the central corridor of Erie. This location, it offers a distinct benefit to the residents for public safety and public services. It's located within blocks of the Public Works Complex, and for those who went on the tour with us, they saw both complexes and saw that it's within walking distance, and it's a short distance from City Hall. So the city's footprint would be expanding, but within the cohesion of our current core layout. And developing a regional training facility, enhanced facility for the city of Erie is critical, as Bill and Len spoke about earlier, having this ability to train more officers will allow the city to be more efficient, cost-effective, and will provide opportunity for additional trainings, funding, et cetera.
And what the money can achieve?
Okay, uh, yeah, so the overall project would be considered to be adaptive reuse, as David said. And then other, other considerations are the fact that it's an opportunity to purchase a continuous 120,000 square foot building. And the, uh, the, to rebuild new, we, we thought that question would come up, it's, it would be roughly forty million dollars just to build the structure, not the contents of the building, which would be two to three times as much. And the estimated expenditure, uh, Renee is going to talk about funding now, so turn it over to Renee to give about the money.
Um, so, yeah, over the last, um, couple of years, we've been, you know, talking to our state reps, to, um, staff of our, uh, federal representatives about some of our needs, and they've consistently expressed to us that we need to get site control of a building to be able to apply for grants and, and other funding sources. So, um, most recently, we met with them on May tenth. President Nelson was there, along with, um, Councilwoman Faulkner, um, to kind of go through this presentation with them as well, and let them know where we were at. So basically, you know, in terms of the representatives from our federal, um, uh, senators and congressmen, they believe that there will be funding available through DOJ for pieces of the project, like for instance, the build-outs, the, um, the, uh, real-time crime center, uh, the, for PAL, for the PAL program, for various pieces of equipment, uh, for incident command, for the shooting range, we will be able to apply for the build-outs. Also, correct, uh, congressionally-directed spending, we've actually already submitted a request uh, for the real-time crime center, um, and to build out piece, pieces of the op, uh, emergency operations center. We didn't say that was gonna be at Marsh Street, so that's, or at Miller Brothers' site, so that's how we got around it. We could always locate some of those things here in the interim until we have a better facility. They also recommended that we can use our so, city allocation of CDBG funding. Uh, they said AR, our, our key funds would be the easiest route to, to use those funds, and then also, um, the option of floating a bond.
Are we speaking, are we speaking versus to other than Milton?
Actually, we have, um, um, I'll get to that, that's the next page. So in September of 2021, we had been talking to them, and, um, with their support, we were able to get a fifteen million dollar, um, rack fee line item, which means that we now have an avenue for applying for fifteen million dollars worth of funding. If we, if we get that, it requires a one-to-one match. The purchase price can be used toward the match, and then we would just need to come up with the rest of the funding to be able to pull down that entire rack fee. And they're also working on identifying additional sources of funding.
I have a question, you say a line item for a rack fee, what exactly do you mean? I know rack fees happen every year, but how do you-
Sometimes twice a year, yeah, so-
Twice a year?
Yeah.
So how do we have a line item for a couple of years ago?
So in-
In a rack fee?
Right, in order to apply for funding, there has to be a line item dedicated that you can apply to. So if there isn't a line item, you can't even apply for funding. So like, for instance, there are, there are different line items for economic development, for brownfield remediation, and we, knowing that-
So it's a line item within the context of what the state-
Would potentially fund.
-program, not a line item in-
Not, funding's not, so everybody applies when the, when the window opens, and then, you know, based on the applications they get, they prioritize the ones that they wanna fund. So it's not guaranteed that we would get the funding on the first round, but because of the regional nature of the bomb squad, the SWAT vehicle, and mutual aid that we provide, our chances are much better, because we have a lot more representatives that would be in favor of the project. The window is supposed to open in June. Various programs in the state have been delayed because of the new administration, but we're expecting it to open soon. Um, and usually, the window, I think it's open for about thirty days, so it's a pretty quick turnaround. Um, and then the next slide gets at the purchase price, which you may be wondering. So the, the purchase price is estimated at 2.8 million. And, uh, Chris Groner is here, and, uh, he's, he's gonna be able to help us with the one million dollar municipal loan at one percent, uh, which is, of course, as you know, really low. And then-
See you later.
From the advice of our, um, federal reps, uh, we've identified 1.8 million in ARP funding that had been allocated for police and for redevelopment projects in the urban core that we could use. Um, so that would give us the purchase price. Again, as I said earlier, Mark has been amazing throughout this process, but he does have other interested buyers, and he's continued to work with us, but we're getting to the point where time is of the essence, and in order to apply for the grants, uh, and, and the loan, uh, also, we need to get site control. So, um, in terms of next steps, what we're hoping is that, um, city council would be willing to pass a resolution at the next meeting to allow us to enter into a sales agreement, uh, with Mark and provide him with a deposit, so that we could move forward with our period of due diligence and enable us to start applying for grants and, and securing financing.
So you're just gonna tell some, let me just read-
So 2.8 million dollar price, 1.8 million coming from ARP, public safety, and 1 million coming from Erie County Redevelopment Authority at one percent loan?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, what was the 1.8 slated for?
It was in public safety, and it was in, um, urban core redevelopment projects.
Okay, so what urban core redevelopment projects are just un, un, untitled, uneven?
Unfunded.
Unfunded.
We don't have any, I mean, there weren't, and it wasn't designated for specific projects.
But it was designated for a specific purpose?
Redevelopment of buildings within the urban core, which this is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And 1.8, and that also includes the three police officers, that's the other spot?
Right, yeah. Does anybody have any other questions?
What, what buckets the urban core stuff from? Sorry.
Economic and community development.
Economic and community development.
I would just say, as, you know, as we allocated those ARP funds, I, you know, we didn't, you know, anticipate, you know, uh, us being the benefactor of the money that we allocated that theoretically helped the public, and those who were, uh, most impacted by COVID.
Well, um, our federal representatives noted that because of, one of the other ways that you can use the funding is revenue replacement, which we haven't done a lot of, for needs for cities, for municipalities, to shore up their infrastructure, to put them on better footing for the future. And so they recommended to us that this was an eligible expense. And one of the easiest sources.
I have a question whether it was eligible or not, that, that, that was in the statement.
Yeah, that revenue replacement that came out after the allocations is huge, I'm so happy that that's what's being considered on this. So I'm just reading, "Urban Core and Anchor Building Redevelopment, A Combination of Low-Interest Loans and Grants to Assist With Large Redevelopment Projects in the Heart of Downtown Erie." So this is a million dollars that was allocated for that, that would be going towards a anchor building on State Street. It, it seems-
It's not all from urban core.
Okay.
Most of it's from public safety.
Okay, yeah, 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 I, yeah, yeah. I, I did the math to realize that that was, uh, gonna be the case, but that, I mean, that seems to be within the heart of the allocation as that went. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm actually pretty comfortable with that, and public safety, I mean, this is, uh, that's, that's why it's all public safety staff here talking to us. It seems to be somewhat within the heart of how it was allocated, I'm pretty excited. With something that'll last, uh, much longer.
Once the fire and the police and public works department move out of City Hall, what happens to the space? Who's moving, what's gonna occur? Because there's updates to the city building that we also have been deferred maintenance as well.
Administration is not moving out of City Hall. Staff are moving from the bomb squad facility and the Marsh Street facility. Evidence will move from City Hall, which that area will need to be shored up, because we have issues there. We have a lot of files that take up whole office spaces that could be moved to Marsh Street to make more room for personnel here in the city, so those are the kinds of things that would start to shift.
And it would allow us to take a proactive look at our satellite facilities such as Marsh Street to evaluate when a major repair needs to occur, such as the roof or floor, to proactively plan and consolidate services or consolidate locations, so that it's in within the cohesiveness of our core.
So we still have to figure out the other fifteen million of the match for the RACB. A lot of the phase two stuff is the stuff you're referring to for DOJ funding, so there's a, so there's some relief for that.
Also, the emergency operations center could get funding that way, as well, congressionally directed spending.
Okay.
It, it can be project to project as well.
Yeah.
And it was recommended to us that identify a project, for example, congressional direct. You identify a project, identify how much it's going to cost. We have a budget, we have a plan, identify where that is, where it fits into our overall project. We've gone through this presentation multiple times on congressional directs, and there is support across, across both aisles of congressional, that there is great support for this project, it's just site control is, is the key, and we can go project to project to stack the funding, to match the funding, to leverage funding, to get there, to put the puzzle together.
I don't need to be on Facebook asking some of these questions. I'll talk, I'll try to figure some of these out. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
I have one question. So I think you've looked it up, so is that the entire allocation that we have for this, for shoring up historical buildings going, going to us?
What, I'm sorry?
So-
Economic development, it's one million dollars allocated for historic building restoration. Are we taking all of that for this one project?
No, we're not taking any of that. You're talking about the historic preservation grants and loans?
From the ERPA funds.
The, that was a million dollar, there was a nine hundred and ninety thousand in historic preservation, we're not taking any of that.
Then I looked through the wrong, right?
The one million in urban core?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was separate, there was two separate ones.
I was going to say, that was a million dollars.
We're not taking all of it. I don't remember, I don't know if Chris has a tally of where we're at with it. We're meeting, we're actually-
I understand one, sir.
I'm sorry?
Urban core.
Yeah, urban core, building redevelopment rehabilitation.
Sure. So we do have projects in that fund now that are, so those funds are revolving, so we're going to time the components of this with the RDA loan, the funds that are internal already, get the timing of all that lined up. I don't have the exact balance of that fund, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's a loan, right? So the, it's, the interest is revolving off.
Right, payments are going back in.
So actually, we're using the interest.
But the key is, and it was already mentioned, you've got to get site control, like with the brownfields, we, we weren't able to attract anything until we actually owned them, and then we were able to start multiplying and leveraging, so ultimately, we've got to be the first dollar in. If we're not, nothing's going to happen. But once you've got your first dollar in, you know, there's a lot of sources. They've identified already, if we can keep the finance costs low with our own funds plus a one percent loan, while we multiply and leverage, those cost effectively.
Something that I, that is, I think maybe productive stuff, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not educated enough on it to contribute to the conversation. So, so that's it, I don't have anything else for anyone.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.